Good evening and welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, at the Veterans Memorial Building on 209 Surf Street. All Commissioners are here in presence, so we've established quorum. At this point, I would like to request a moment of silence for... Please? Thank you, and we have the Pledge of Allegiance ready. Begin.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. This is the Republic of Washington, individual.
Okay, do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Joe?
With respect to Cerrito Peak, there's an organization called the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, which is continuing its efforts to raise money to assure that Cerrito Peak is never developed. There's sort of a misimpression, because the city purchased it, that the danger is over, but in fact, it was only a reprieve in that unless money is raised to reimburse the city, there is a distinct possibility that two or three years from now, the property will be placed back on the market for development. So we want to raise the money and ensure that it permanently remains open space. So anyone who's interested in helping out in any way, it should go to, let's see, MBO Open Space dot org, and you can find out more details.
Okay. Any other announcements? All right. At this time, we'll have public comment period, and this is the time for the members of the public to address the Commission on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any takers? No? Okay. No presentations scheduled? We have the consent calendar, A1 and A2. Do we have anybody wishing to pull any of those items for any reason? Okay. We have a request for... Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar, A1 and A2.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Now's the time for public hearings. This is B1, case number UPO-491 and ADO-123. It's a site located at 299 Sienna, Morro Bay. And Joan, I think this is your bailiwick.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Lauer, and good evening, fellow Commissioners. So the project before you this evening is a request for minor use permit and parking exception approval for the conversion of the existing garage to habitable floor area and to allow for substandard parking at 299 Sienna Street. The applicant is Christopher Erlinson, and the agent is Chris Parker, Architect. So before we dive in, two notes. One, we lost power at City Hall, like I would imagine other members of the public did. So unfortunately, we have no PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. However, Mr. Graham over there has...
We're going low-tech.
Yes, we're going low-tech. But also, a couple other housekeeping items. So first, the applicant submitted a petition via email to the Planning Commission, City Council, and City Staff, and a separate email with comments to the PWEB members. Copies of this petition are available to the public on the table and have been given to the Commissioners. Also, the agent emailed an electronic copy of the plan set to staff on Monday, September the 25th. That included an additional parking option, and per an email received today, the fourth option for a one-car garage is not being proposed, so that will not be spoken of after this. Also, the plan set that was emailed on Monday that was attached as Exhibit B to the staff report and available online is inaccurate. It is not correct. So accurate 11-by-17 copies of that plan set are available on the table, and those copies match the full-size plan sets that you Commissioners are looking at. So just a little bit of housekeeping. Okay. So to dive back in, let's see, the project setting. The project's located in the North Morro Bay Residential Neighborhood. It's denoted as Planning Area 1 in the local coastal plan, in the Beach Track Neighborhood. It lies to the west of Highway 1, to the north of the Cloisters subdivision, and south of Delmar Park. The approximately 5,600-square-foot parcel is designated Moderate Density Residential in the land use plan, and it is zoned R1/ S2A. So permitting history. Back in March, the applicant submitted a building permit application for interior remodeling. The existing floor plan on that original building permit submittal showed a two-car garage. Then the proposed floor plan on that original building permit submittal also showed a two-car garage, which was to remain. Those plans were approved. Then responding to a neighborhood complaint, the code enforcement officer performed a site visit and discovered that there was an illegal conversion of the garage that included a bathroom, laundry, and playroom, and instructed the applicant to submit accurate plans, because those, what was on the ground and what was existing, was not shown on any plans that the city had. The applicant was informed that the garage conversion did not meet zoning standards and was given two options. One, remove the non-permitted improvements in the garage, or two, apply for a minor use permit and parking exception, which staff will deny, necessitating an appeal to the Planning Commission. But the Community Development Director has the authority to eliminate that denial and appeal process and elevate something directly to Planning Commission, which is the option that the applicants have chosen, which is why we're here tonight. Also, there was, based on input from the real estate agent of record on the property, the bathroom, laundry, and play area improvements were installed after the purchase of the property in 2014. So as part of this submittal for the minor use permit and parking exception, the applicant has proposed three different parking options. Option number one is two parking spaces in the existing driveway within the front setback and partially extending, pardon me, into the unimproved Sienna Street public right-of-way. So no garage, no carport. Option two was to construct a one-car carport on the eastern side yard and dedicate one parking space in tandem with the former garage area in the front setback area and extending into the unimproved public right-of-way. Option three is to again construct a one-car carport within the eastern side yard and to dedicate that second required parking space in tandem with the carport in the front setback and extending partially into the public right-of-way. The... Let's see. Prior to construction of the bathroom, laundry, and play area improvements within the existing garage area, the garage was considered non-conforming. The city's current minimum interior clear space requirements within a garage is 20 feet by 20 feet. The existing garage prior to construction of non-permitted improvements measured 19 feet by 20 feet, making it non-conforming and subject to the non-conforming ordinance 17.56 in the Morro Bay Municipal Code. So in that non-conforming section of our zoning ordinance, it does allow for the expansion or alteration of non-conforming structures, as long as the work being done is in conformance with all provisions of the zoning code. Conversion of a garage to another use without replacement makes the structure more non-conforming and is therefore inconsistent with policies set forth in the municipal code. The garage can only be converted if the Planning Commission approves a parking exception that relocates the existing two enclosed spaces elsewhere on the site. So therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission deny the minor use permit application and parking exception for the proposed project at 299 Sienna by adopting the Planning Commission Resolution 2417, which includes the findings for denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Do we have any questions? First, let's ask, does anybody have any ex parte communication? Okay. And then, do we have any questions for Joan?
Joan, could you outline the difference between two and three again?
The only difference between two and three is the location of the second parking space. One is in tandem with the space in the carport, and the other would be located in front of what is the former garage. And just to note, on the plans that were submitted, they are proposing to keep the garage doors, so it appears like a garage, but it's not on the inside. So one option is to have the space in tandem in front of the carport. One option is to have a parking space in a carport and a parking space over here in front of what would be the former garage.
Richard? Any questions?
Joan, could you just describe a little bit? You said that the real estate records show that that garage was converted after the purchase. Is that correct?
That's correct. The contractor who did a lot of the work to get the house ready for sale also confirmed that there was a two-car garage in 2013, 2014. And then in October of 2014, the house was sold, and the real estate agent of record was contacted by staff and confirmed that there was a two-car garage there.
Okay. And then, so basically, right now, what you're saying, in there, there's a bathroom and a...
A bathroom, a laundry room, and a playroom.
Joe?
So I gather, in your record, conversations that indicated, when they were talking about the planning, that there was a laundry room and bathroom in the garage at the time the plan was submitted?
No, sir. Staff was presented with plans to the Building Department that showed the existing and proposed floor plans, both the existing and the proposed floor plans for this interior remodel that... I'm sorry, I hate not having a presentation. But when the original building permit application came in for interior remodeling, it showed the existing and proposed floor plans, both showed a two-car garage. But upon the code enforcement officer going out based on a complaint, he saw that there were these improvements in the garage that were not shown on any plans. So then plans were resubmitted to the city that showed two-car garage with a proposed playroom and laundry, which staff denied. And staff denied the building permit application, the amended, accurate building permit application. We said, no. The only way that you can get this approved is either to rip them out or to apply for the MUP and the parking exception, which is why we're here.
And at the time that it became known that there was a bathroom in the garage, was there any suggestion on the part of the applicant that they might not have known that before building the bathroom, that they should seek a permit through the community office? Was there any suggestion that they simply didn't?
There was some suggestion. There was some suggestion that the improvements were put in before they bought the house. There was some suggestion that it's against the law to make them rip it out because it was there before they bought it. There was suggestion that they didn't know they needed a permit. There were a couple things, yes.
And then my final question is, has the applicant sort of honed in on which of the exceptions, or should I take that, they feel that all the exceptions would apply in this case in terms of validating the existing arrangement? Have they sort of picked an exception that applies? Seems to me that the applicant should focus on why it is that we should make this exception. Okay. Thank you.
No, sir. Yeah.
And the applicants here, and they'll make their case, and as to, you know, the justification for both the requests before you this evening, and as to their preferred alternative, I would imagine as well. So I think they wanted to provide you options, so maybe one was more appealing to you than the other, and they were ones that they could live with and that would serve the function that they needed to serve, that, you know, they were happy to offer a few different solutions to the problem, you know, so they could have the additional space for their family.
And Joan, my question is, on the set of plans, there's existing residence, the square footage. Is that including the garage as living area, or is that not including the garage as living area? And if so, because I don't see a garage square footage listed in the project info on sheet A1.1.
Yes. What they are calling existing residence, which includes the habitable space in the garage, is included in this 1,508 square feet.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, Mike?
Scott, can you tell me why does the space that we're talking about, that was the conversion, does it qualify as a bedroom?
It's not permitted, so they haven't gone through our process in order for us to do that, so can't answer the question.
I mean, would it technically qualify as a bedroom because of the door to the exterior?
So for it to be a bedroom, it would have to have all the exiting requirements, Title 24, those types of things. And we have not made that analysis, because they've not submitted that to the city yet. Were the Planning Commission this evening to actually approve the request for the parking exception, we would have to come back with a resolution, but they would have to move forward at that point and go through a building permit process for us to evaluate and analyze, you know, the conversion of that area to habitable space.
And there's been no discussion, there's been no discussion about this as a secondary unit?
Not at, well, I mean, not at this point. They haven't discussed that with us, so I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
If it were to get approved, they wouldn't.
Yeah. It's got to get into your connection, though.
At this point, we'll open it for public comment. We normally have the applicant speak first. Please state your name.
Good evening, Commissioner. Chris Parker, the architect. Sorry about the confusion on the plans and the emails and such. Initially, this started out as a kitchen remodel project, so I just measured the interior of the structure and detailed that portion. Just Joan went through the majority of the different exceptions you have in front of you to review, and it was just they wanted to give you some options to look at. She mentioned the petition or the signatures that went around the neighborhood. There's something, let's see, there's about 28 signatures on that out of 22 households around the neighborhood. They were in favor of it. And then the client is actually here. He, just as of this evening, had a discussion with the state about the accessible dwelling unit, the state regulations, and he wanted to discuss the parking element of that when he gets a chance to speak as well. Thank you.
I'm the applicant. So at this point in time, I met with, on a conference call today, with California Department of Housing and Community Development, Ms. Beth Harden and Mr. Greg Nicholas. So at this point in time, the state law changed January 1st, 2017. They were a little taken back that the city of Morro Bay did not request us to process this garage conversion through as an accessory dwelling unit. So they provided me with documentation today regarding accessory dwelling unit, as well as a link to the website showing that the city of Morro Bay has not updated their ordinance in conformance with the state. So in the conference call with them and my attorney, Marshall Ochilsky, the primary thing and request would be to amend today's application to the garage conversion as an accessory dwelling unit. And I will show a couple of small reasons why that is the request and a recommendation of the state.
Excuse me, Scott. Just a point order. We do not have that before us.
You wouldn't be able to make a decision on something that's not in front of you and hasn't been properly noticed? But Mr. Erlinson's free to make his discussion, and you could continue the item. We have some information also to provide you as it relates to the updated requirements from the state and how it necessarily wouldn't apply to the situation here, although he could apply for a secondary dwelling unit. But we can get into that after he finishes his presentation.
Okay.
I don't want to interrupt him.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
So as you see here, no total prohibition. So the law, the new law prohibits any local government from adopting an ordinance that precludes an ADU. So after the discussion with the attorney in the state, it's recommended that we go through a application process at the city and process the garage conversion as an accessory dwelling unit. The other reason behind that is the parking, because you can't preclude an ADU in the state. It's a state law now, and once you do go through the application as an ADU, it handles all the parking requirements that we're discussing here tonight. So covered parking can no longer be an ordinance by a city, and this was on our conference call today. You're more than welcome to call, contact the individuals. They gave me their phone numbers and their emails. They'd like to know when Morro Bay is going to be updated. So they gave me the link to the website showing that Morro Bay has not updated any ordinances in regards to accessory dwelling unit. The governor did sign it into effect. It was law January 1st, and in the next week, we're already going to see revisions to it. So at that point in time, it automatically handles any of the parking restrictions that are classified with an accessory dwelling unit, even specifically that if the accessory dwelling unit is done in the driveway, the existing, or it's done in the garage, that all flexible arrangements, such as tandem, including existing driveways and uncovered parking, are allowed. So of course, if we have to continue this or not go with this, you know, we're more than happy to go down that route with Planning and the Building Department, whoever's going to process ADUs for the city. And Marshall will go through that with Chris on any of those recommendations for that at that point in time. For us right now, the main thing out of the options, we put a few options in there, just trying to say, hey, we're fairly flexible with what property we have here, and that if option one, two, or three could be accepted, we were trying to figure out what would fit with our family and what would be easiest for us. So my wife and I, we've been married 24 years. We have 12 children, so we do have a large family. Part of that space, we homeschool, so we have photographs of our second refrigerator out there. There was a laundry room in there, so we do have a text message from the Realtor today explaining that she did explain to staff that there was already a laundry facility out there, and the measurements weren't 19 by 20, because the furnace room took up space out there. So did the water heater. So did the water softener. And when we were in there, we had some drainage problems with the laundry room, because we found out that the drain pipe goes through our concrete front porch and then tries to travel through the crawl space all the way to the sewer lateral that's in the backyard. So we had to do some repair work at the time. And when we did this conversion, we did this when we moved my mom in with dementia. She died last year, but we did this conversion to create space, and we did this in 2014. And so when we did the overall remodel, we went in for the application on the windows, on our exterior work and the kitchen. And, you know, Chris didn't show the garage, because I didn't even take him in the garage. So he just drew up the exterior stuff and then came inside. We needed to remove a wall inside, and he wanted to verify with me that it was non-bearing and that it could clear span when he did the drawings. So that's why they weren't on his original drawings. It wasn't a scope of work that I gave him.
Thank you very much.
And then lastly, you will see, it's my understanding that we're here for an exception, so we know that it's an exception to the rule. We understand that we're here for a parking exception, and the work that is done in the garage, we need to come back through here, be permitted, have Carl back out for some inspections, or a third-party engineer or something that gives a comfort to the city for that. And the outside parking is an exception, and we are asking for an exception. We do have a rather large family, and you will see the signatures or everybody that lives in our immediate area. We know there were some people that weren't comfortable with a parking exception, or those individuals don't even live on our street or our block. And none of the traffic pattern or anything that we're dealing with, with parking in our driveway, are going to affect those people or their quality of life, you know, or diminish anything in the city at that point in time. So that's why their signatures are there and why we added them to the file today.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none. Do we have questions for the applicant? Okay. Richard?
Chris, could you elaborate a little bit more on, you had an issue when you guys moved in with the drainage issue?
Yes.
And that drain pipe, that drain was tied into your sewer lateral? Is that right?
It is. The garage is a slab, and the house is crawl space.
Right.
So they had run the pipe outside under my concrete porch, then tied back into my crawl space, and so it's trying to get clear fall all the way to the back. So even to make our laundry function, you know, we had to drop in a little grinder pit, you know, a mini lift station, because we were pushing, you know, sewer all the way to the back, you know?
Okay. Okay. So you, okay. Okay. I understand now.
So we didn't realize when we bought the home that the sewer laterals didn't go out the front of the house.
Right.
Because we didn't see an easement on the plat that they provided.
Right.
We didn't realize the sewer laterals were split in the backyards and running down the back.
Okay. Okay. So when you run your laundry, you got to...
You got to push it up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Michael?
Can you describe why you wanted to take option four off the table?
Why I want to take option four off the table?
Yeah.
Because after reviewing everything with the city and seeing the packet from Joan and the city were not wanting to approve anything, option four is the most expensive, you know, thing that gets prohibited for my family, and so we took it off the table. Firstly, we didn't put it on the table, right? So that was never in my submittal packet, ever. What happened was Joan had asked Chris for a digital copy of some plans, and when Chris sent them over, those were just some general provisions that Chris and I had worked on. And when they came, she added them to the packet, so I emailed and let her know, hey, that wasn't part of our packet. Never was. When the digital set came over, Chris was just sending plans over in compliance with options one, two, and three. He wasn't amending my application.
And since this is a public hearing, and your testimony is part of a record that could be used for future deliberations, are you suggesting that these people signing this petition understood you were going to ask for a secondary dwelling unit as part of this?
A secondary dwelling unit? No. We told them we were asking for the garage conversion to stay as it is with the exterior parking as we submitted.
Okay. Thanks.
Regardless of the name of what it is, but for the finish to stay, yes.
Okay. Joe? I'm focused on the bathroom in the garage. I'm guessing that you would say that that was an honest I'm guessing that you would say that that was an honest mistake, that you didn't really know at the time that you should seek the permission of the development office? Or what explanation can you offer if not that?
We, you know, I don't have an explanation. We had the plumbing in there. You know, we had the power and everything in there. And when we went in to make the repairs for the laundry that was draining, that's when we completed the bathroom.
And then the second question is, we're being asked to make an exception in our various parking exceptions that are listed. Which of those exceptions do you think applies? Or is it your position that they all apply? I'd like to know, in making a decision, it's very helpful to know from the applicant why we should make this exception.
Okay. We feel that the exterior parking alone applies. Not really sure where our city rests upon, you know, covered parking. You know, I've been in a lot of other cities where covered parking isn't a requirement. What's required is off-street parking, depending upon the width of the rideaway, you know, for emergency vehicles, things of that nature. So, a lot of places in my neighborhood, they don't park in their garages anyways. You know, there are multiple finished garages in my neighborhood that are completed or carpeted or eaten into of some degree. And most of the people park in the driveway. And we have a clear shot of our three vehicles parking off the roadway, on paved surfaces. And those seem that they are sufficient. We're at the end of the street against Highway 1. We're the only street that actually does make a turn and go through, but everything else in that neighborhood, you know, dead ends at Highway 1. And we don't get a lot of traffic down there. You know, that traffic is just designed for local traffic going to their house. It's not a feeder road. It's nothing of that caliber. So, we don't see how parking our vehicles out in our driveway is a nuisance or a burden.
Okay. That would seem to sort of fit under parking exception number one, I think.
Number one.
Thank you.
Okay. My questions are for Chris Parker. Couple of questions, Chris. Where is the HVAC?
It's in the attic.
It's in the attic? Is it in the garage, attic of the garage, or is it in the house?
It's above the house. I mean, in the attic within the house.
Okay. Where's the hot water heater?
Hot water heater is tankless, isn't it? It's in the garage.
It's in the garage?
Yes.
Okay. And then what's the, what's the section on the, where the garage door is? Has that been a party wall put on the inside? What's, how was that handled?
You mean behind the garage door?
To the interior, yeah.
You know, I have to, is there, there's a false wall there, correct? Yeah. False wall currently. It's a, the garage door's been replaced. It's an updated garage door for curb appeal, but currently, it's basically a false wall right there.
Okay. So, is there, you know, is there exterior vanning for the water heater for combustion air?
It's an electric water heater.
It's an electric water?
Really? It is gas. Sorry. It's gas. Chris would have to kind of tell you how it's vintage, but...
Okay.
Because it's currently in place there. How is it vintage? Okay. And are you asking about makeup air? Is that what you were more going over?
Yeah. And also occupancy separation between...
Between dwelling.
The combustion air and the dwelling.
Yeah. I'd have to look into it to see actually where it's physically located within there currently. I'm guessing it's in the laundry room area. Yeah. So, it's within the laundry room. So, they have the fire, they got a fire door there separating it.
So, when you drew up the plans for the remodel?
Correct.
You did not check out the mechanical? You did not check out the water heating?
No. At that time, it was just the kitchen remodel. And really, it was more for the partition between the, I guess, living room and kitchen and the pergola outside. And so, measured up the house, you know, in that area, and then just a few outside dimensions gave me the remaining of the house. It wasn't until the code compliance issue, and then I got information on the garage area. So, we added that to the plans for this submittal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Okay. We'll bring it back to the commission. At this point, any discussion? Joe?
Well, I've looked at the exceptions. And frankly, I've read them more times than I care to recount. I honestly don't think that any of the exceptions apply in this case. Moreover, in the notion of exception, exceptions in the law are an acknowledgement that sometimes the law as written can actually work an injustice in a given scenario. It can be sort of counterproductive to what the intent of the law is. But it seems to me that implicit in that is that an appellant has to demonstrate good faith. Otherwise, the whole idea gets reversed. And again, I'm speaking of the unpermitted bathroom. If you try first, and I have to conclude that the applicant knew that the bathroom should not have been constructed, that if you try to evade, if you say to yourself, well, I will try and evade what the city law says, and if I'm successful, then that ends the issue. However, if I'm not successful, then I will appeal. And that seems to sort of have the incentive the wrong way. I guess I'm suggesting that the exception should really be foreclosed if you first seek to evade what the law is. So, that would be my position. Now, and I can, you know, I have some things to say in terms of kind of a general context about this parking issue and whether we should allow parking on the street. But I won't go into that until we've sort of finished the specifics of this. Michael, you want to be next?
Yeah. I listened to the testimony and, you know, the idea that, gee, some of the drainage was unusual and, you know, you have to have a pump to get a, you know, the laundry effluent out. And that's kind of a cascading series of bad choices, you know? And now, we've got another bad choice, you know? And as a registered architect, not in California, but in Maryland, you know, the reason you've got permits is not so much to, you know, keep Scott busy. Well, that's nice to keep him busy. It's that those neighbors know some level of review was done during construction. So, you know, my first rental home that I lived in when I came to this area, we had an electrical fire every year in the house from a fixture that was installed by the owner. And after that, it was like, I'm not going to live in this rental unit. So, the evasion of permits is not so much a right. It's a community intersubjective agreement that we will protect each other from poor performance. And so, it's one thing to convert the garage to a, you know, pool room, as maybe someone on my street has done. It's another thing to start putting in apparatus and appliances and plumbing, which have potentially, and electrical, which has potentially an impact on, you know, an accident that could endanger the neighborhood. So, I'm very concerned about the kind of aspect of the lack of understanding of why the permit's there. The thing that's in front of us, I'm not aware of any circumstance I can remember in eight years of prior planning commission and the two or three that I've been on this time, and where we've had the primary parking relieved in a home. We've never, to my knowledge, had the first parking space waived. We've looked at tandems. We've looked at exterior for the second. We've looked at covered and uncovered for the second, but not the first. So, I appreciate that other places may do that, but we haven't done it here, to my knowledge. And then I'm concerned that there's drawings are not correct. There wasn't, this idea of the secondary dwelling unit is not something that I think the endorsers of this petition were aware of. There's too many pieces on the table that, to me, are, that concern me. I can't take these as valid because of that. So, I'm not necessarily, at this point, to hear my colleagues in support of this.
Richard?
I know Michael said a key point here. The reason why we're here, number one, the reason why we're here, is public health and safety. That's why we're doing permits. That's why we all, all that stuff is here. And that's what we have to, is paramount. That's at least the way I look at it, okay? That said, I feel that the exceptions shouldn't be the rule. And that's kind of what I'm feeling. This is the direction it's going with regards to parking exceptions. I would like to maybe, I don't know if now's the time, but I would like to, Scott, get some dialogue with you regarding the law that he, the gentleman was...
Richard, I don't think that's what's in front of us. So, I think we're... It was brought up by the applicant, so we can speak to it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, yes, secondary unit law was updated and became effective January 1, as the planning commission is probably aware. We went through an update. We were processing an update through the coastal commission to the previous change to the law. And when this new one came up, then we had to withdraw that. And we've incorporated this process and the updating of our code into the ongoing general plan, local coastal program, and zoning code update. The new law does state, in certain circumstances, secondary dwelling units are not required to have parking if you're within a half-mile of the transit stop. And there's definitions as to how you define that half-mile. And, but it doesn't say you can get rid of your existing parking. It doesn't really do that. So, I would say, yes, there's state law. We would, if somebody came in with an application today for a secondary unit, we would follow state law and our existing ordinance, because portions of it are not nullified by this code. But where they are inconsistent, we would use state law now. And, but again, we will have that move coming forward as part of the overall update. So, that's kind of where that stands. I don't know that it's particularly relevant to this. You know, if the applicant wants to go down that road and have some additional discussions about that, that's fine. We can do that. Certainly happy to entertain them. Obviously, it's not something that's part of the decision-making process this evening for you, unless you were to, you know, continue it and have them work with us through what that might look like and then bring something back. So, those would be options for you.
Are you satisfied? Okay. Joe? Did you have something else to say?
Only in the general context of, in the general context, not in the specific...
Let's deal with this, the specifics here. My comments on this are pretty simple. I'm most concerned with health and safety. And this, you know, this remodel did not get permitted. It violates a couple of health and safety issues that I can see without even entering there. For one, combustion error. If somebody's sleeping in that room and there's a water heater, there's a combustion error and a carbon monoxide issue that's not being addressed if it's not, if it's not been permitted and didn't go through the permitting process and the plan check. So, we have a lot of unpermitted work in this town. And I think this is just another case of somebody of that instance. And it's, you know, it's quite frankly dangerous for them and for their neighbors, too. So, do we have a motion? What is, do we have kind of a consensus on where we're going with this?
I just wanted to ask if there'd be any interest in considering option four, which would actually...
It's not before us.
It's not before us.
So, it's not, yeah, there you go. So, if there's, if you are interested in something else, you can state that and pull the applicant if they're willing to bring something like that back. Maybe they're not. Maybe they just want denial, and they can go appeal to city council if they want to go that route. Certainly, that's available to them. So, yeah, if there's other things that you're interested in, and maybe not what they've shown you, but something else, you can express that. If, you know, if you do express that, I'd like to get somewhat of a consensus going in that direction, though, so they don't go out there and unnecessarily spin their wheels on something that they bring back, and then you're like, yeah, no, we don't really like that. If you give them a direction, then they're going to go do, you know, and they agree, then they would come back with, you know, something along the lines of what you requested.
So, let's be sure what option four would be if that, if we decided that's what we wanted to do.
It's basically a garage in the location where the carport is shown on that slide. That would not be a carport, but would be a garage space for one car. And then they would have either tandem where the existing driveway is located or in tandem with the one-car garage. It could be in tandem in either one of those scenarios. That tandem car, because there's only about 15 feet in front of it, a portion of it, which is why it's written in the staff report, would extend into the rideaway. But we have approved other scenarios where that's happened. So, that wouldn't be a decision that's inconsistent with previous planning commission's decisions. We do have parking exceptions that do include extension out into the unimproved rideaway, and we've done that a few times. So, for what that's worth.
Okay. How do you guys want to go about it? You want to pull the applicant, or do you want to make a motion and then, before we take a final vote on it? Get a motion in a second? I think that's probably the way we should do it.
I'm fine to ask the applicant.
Okay. Richard? Joe? Okay. With the, we'll reopen public comment and ask the applicant to come forward. Okay. So, at this point, the way I see it, you have, you have an option here. We can, it seems like we have consensus on the commission that we're going to deny your application. So, if you would like, we could deny the application and you could take it straight to the city council. The other option is, we can continue this option and continue this application, and you can work with staff to try to remedy, to remedy it. Or you can, we can continue it to date uncertain, and you can talk to your lawyers and see which way you want to go with that. So, we got an option to continue it to date uncertain, continue it to date certain, or to deny it. So, which way would you like to go?
You know, I think we just continue it. I think we could set a date. I mean, so, we're all moving towards, you know, completion of it rather than that unopened. And I think we're willing to work with staff to jump on those things immediately, both on the design and if you feel there are health and safety concerns. We're very confident we can address, you know, those through the building department as well.
Okay. Great.
So, wouldn't want to agendize it to a specific date. We haven't covered, we haven't covered dates going into the next two months, and we may be canceling meetings as a result of holidays. So...
So, we probably would continue it to a date uncertain?
Uncertain. But I mean, we will, you know, we will work with them, and if they're ready to go, we'll bring it back. I mean, we're not, there's no, we don't want to hold off on anything. If we get them ready and get it dialed up, we'll tee it up and bring it back. It's, we're not going to hold it for any reason.
Would you like more discussion to see how the planning commission would like?
I would like to get as much input as I could from the commission about things you're interested in. So, and I think the applicant would like that, too, because he needs to make an informed decision about where he wants to go based on the continuance. And so, that would be good. So, if you could have a little more discussion, that'd be appreciated.
Okay. And we don't want it to be bouncing back and forth, and that just, that serves nobody any good. So, okay. I think I'll close this for public comment and bring it back to the commission. Who wants to go first on this? Joe?
With respect to the fourth option, as always, I'm concerned about perceptions, perceptions of what our decisions mean now and going forward. And I think you might say it was just fortuitous that the violation was discovered. And I think it would be unwise to sort of... And I think it would be unwise to sort of let it continue down that path, meaning, well, as I expressed in my first comments, I don't think that's a good idea.
Michael?
Well, I think we've, we've looked at situations where people have tried to expand their homes in an appropriate manner, and we have looked at some of the older, smaller lots and given some concession for adding capacity. So I'm willing to look at that situation. The idea, if it would be pursued, that it's a secondary unit also means that it's an affordable, potentially, unit. And I think we have a situation where that's something that's in the city's interest to, if it was in our housing plan. So I'm open to it. I do not want to endorse everybody who has done, you know, clubbed their garage or whatever you want to call it. No, I don't, I don't think we want to step away from those things being acceptable. We want to make sure everything's done right. But it would be, if someone had proposed, I want to turn the garage, I want to convert the garage, and I want to add a one-car garage, would we waive? I think we would look at that. And so that's what I'm willing to take a look at.
Is that in the sense of that they'd be willing to provide a secondary unit, so you'd be giving consideration for that in the form of the parking exception process? Was that where you were going with that? Just clarification, please.
I think I would be willing to look at it under either circumstance.
Okay, good, thank you.
Richard?
I think that I'd be interested in, in the conversation of a secondary unit, okay? I am concerned with what Commissioner Graffia says, that we, you just blanket, you know, approve, you know, or there's no checks and balances, you know, because it's disingenuous to the people that are going through the process and trying to do it, you know, that way. But I think in this, in this particular case, I think that would, I know the area, I have friends that live there, and I think that we, it would be good to have some dialogue on that.
Okay, my feelings on it, and that I would grant a parking exemption for the two-car, for the non-conforming two-car garage as two cars, as a valid two-car garage, seeing as it was built as a two-car garage, if everything was taken out. At this point, I wouldn't, I wouldn't grant any parking exceptions for a single covered parking space and a, an uncovered parking space. And, because I think they could have, with a little forethought, they could have handled an addition and got a, got a second or third bathroom in, plus a, another bedroom on the side lot, and kept the existing parking there. And not tried to circumvent it, the building department and planning, you know. So, so easily on that side lot, they could have, they could have put a bedroom and a bathroom and essentially did what they, what they did with the, in the garage, but would have done it legally. So, so Joe?
You know, I'm, this is going to seem perhaps too harsh, but I, but I really think if the applicant is going to seek redress of a parking law, then he should first respect the parking law, which is to maintain the integrity of the garage.
Okay, do we, do we have somebody to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for resolution.
We're looking for a continuance.
Oh, continuance.
I think is what we're doing.
Okay, okay. Make a motion for a continuance of discussion for the project at 299 Sienna Street with respect to the parking exceptions and the secondary units.
No, it has nothing to do with the secondary units.
To a date to be determined.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just think in the, in the discussion that we had here, if you consider the quality of the spaces involved, maintaining the garage as the place of dwelling and adding a one-car garage on the side is a significant loss of the potential of the site. I think the idea that was discussed of the garage being taken back and with your crawl space and with the capacity to do multiple bedrooms, bathroom, with all the exterior light and access that that east, north, and south side have, that that kind of curling around kind of addition might be far superior than maintaining the existing space and adding a single garage. So I just want to endorse some of the creativity of possible solutions that was discussed up here.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can you call the question?
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Right.
Commissioner Graffia?
No.
And Chairman Lor.
Yes.
Motion passes three-one.
Okay, thank you very much. We, new business, there's none, unless we just have some brand-new business? Unfinished business, none. Planning commissioners' comments? Do we have any?
I do.
Okay. Richard?
You go ahead. You know, I never, I never got a chance to talk about stuff, so I'm here to find out. You know, I've said this before, I don't think cars parked on a street add to the attractiveness of a neighborhood, okay? They're obliged. And the fact that we have this kind of ordinance means that the city fathers agreed with this going back many years.
Can I also bring up that that is an extremely tight, tiny street, that barely two cars can get by the way it is?
Right. If you have cars parking on that street, you reduce it to a one-way street, and it's a battle as to which way that street the driver has to go. It puts the burden, any kind of parking exception puts the burden on the neighbors, because, as we know, tandem parking is observed in the negative. People don't tandem park because it's too inconvenient, it requires some forethought, so one car stays in the driveway and one car gets parked down the street. And, and again, when someone comes asking us for an exception, I think it's incumbent upon them to explain why they should have an exception. Is it prohibitively expensive? Do they have a disability? Will it deprive them of the reasonable use of the property? Not to let us figure it out. And then, so I, what, you know, recalling what Dr. Teffett said, if we make these exceptions and allow tandem, one, there has to be a place within the property borders to park both cars, not in tandem fashion, and there shouldn't be any intrusion into the right-of-way, okay? And finally, I think if we grant that exception, there should be some notice or perhaps explicitly put in the chain of title, so that when somebody else buys the property and they decide that they don't want this asphalt parking space in front of their house, they're going to re-landscape the whole thing, and boom, suddenly a parking space gets eliminated and there's another car on the street that can afford it. Those are my thoughts. And, may I say one thing, though?
Yeah, sure.
And the reason I voted.
Say two things, I think.
And the reason, the reason I voted no is because, you know, I, maybe I just have an unduly respectful.
You shouldn't continue talking about the item since it's been closed. I'm sorry, yeah, so, I mean, let it go for a second, but it was tangentially related to a generalized topic, but we got a little more specific at the end, sorry.
Yeah. Richard?
I want to talk about, or have a, I have a comment on the last city council meeting and a vote on the WRF. And I've been sitting on a volunteer board for the WRF Citizen Advisory Board for almost two years now. And I just want to give a little background, a short little synopsis. When we first started looking at the managed retreat, the whole concept of managed retreat was because we're looking at, once again, public health and safety, okay? That's why we're here, that's why we're doing it. We looked at Rancho Colina, then it was moved to Ragetti. When I spoke with the public works director and the consultants, and my first question a couple of years ago was, where are you going to put the lift station? There was talk about near Highway 1, the off-ramps, there was talk at 1840 Main Street where the Sonic was going to go, they're even talking about maybe putting it in the proposed roundabout in the middle. And then we went, you know, we went through a process, and all of a sudden, you know, the obvious was stated, oh, we're going to put the lift station where all the collection lines go. Well, all the collection lines, it's obviously they go to where the existing treatment plant was. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up is I, you know, I'm pretty safe to say that I was the only one in this room that was a first responder to sewer collection emergencies, okay? And as a first responder to sewer collection emergencies, from my experience, okay, sewer collection emergencies have a higher, they're, they're more time-sensitive, okay? When you have an emergency in a collection system, like a backup or a lift station that fails, you don't have that much time before you have a spill on land, okay? When I worked with, I worked in Cayucus when, at that time, and Bruce Keel was here at the plant, I relied on the Morro Bay's collection, they had the backer trucks, they would come in and we'd have to work strictly, quickly. So when, when the, when the consultants came back and started and designed a lift station with forced mains and all that to go into South Bay, I started questioning the validity of that. And, and I, and I know that there's some people on this commission that, you know, may not agree with the whole big plan, but that's the point. The point is, is I've tried for, in many meetings, and I respected, you know, respected your position, how the council didn't want to talk about it, you know, at the planning commission level, the land use. They canceled three meetings, three WRF-CAC meetings during this pause that we took when the regional board came in and said, hey, look at a site near the existing wastewater treatment plant. Near means no lift station. Near doesn't mean the Dynegy plant. The Dynegy plant would still need a lift station, okay? So my point is, is that I feel that the, the public, see, the city council, they represent the public, and we by proxy represent the public. And there's many people that come, can't come to these meetings, single-family widowers, fixed-income old people, that are going to be burdened with a huge amount of cost of this. And I feel that we, that we, there was a disservice done by not having a good, meaningful dialogue with regards to that option that was put in. And I, that's pretty much all I got to say.
Okay, thanks, Richard. Michael?
Well, I love Richard. We disagree on this issue. I have a five-page letter that I gave to the city council and Scott stating my opinions. It didn't turn out to be the site I would prefer, but I'm happy we're going to move forward. I think the biggest thing that we can do is to think as a community how to most equitably pay for this, because it's going to be very expensive.
And more expensive with the site that was chosen. And so, okay, I guess my comments just kind of, you know, the latest issue we had here was, you know, brought up one of my pet peeves, which is unpermitted work in the, in the city. And having unpermitted work is basically granting a, a privilege to people that do not respect the rules or want to follow the rules. And it's dangerous. I deal with this in my business every day. And, you know, I have to, I have to say that as the cities become more and more, as the process becomes more and more complicated and more and more expensive, there's more and more people that are going to try to subvert, subvert the process and do work unpermitted. In, in my business, we have people coming into the showroom, and we tell them that we permit everything, and 50% of them turn around and walk right out the door, because even though we handle everything, they do not want to go through the process. So if there's any way that we can, you know, that we as a community development, you know, part of that, that process can keep the process as convenient and as easy as possible so we get more conformance, and then also crack down harder on the, on the people that are trying to get away with something and not following the rules and are creating hazards of public health and safety, like, like some of these projects we've seen do, I think that should be our goal. We should be pushing for compliance in the two directions, ease of use and ease of access to the process, you know, and then also more, more enforcement and harder enforcement. So, no, that's, that's, that's my pet peeve, and I appreciate you listening, so.
And on that, that subject, if we can, if we can address it in a kind of a general term, I mean, there's, there's, as I said before, there's a legal prohibition, okay? And then there's a side of law called equity. And equity is just a fancy word for doing what's fair, okay? But courts, as long as the memory of man has said, well, if we're going to do what's fair, then you before us must have clean hands, you must be of good faith. And that should preclude the availability of equity, because, again, and that avoids, well, let me see if I can get away with it, but if I can't, now plead for fairness.
Yeah. Okay, I think we've all had our say. Now, Scott? It's up to you.
So you should all congratulate Joe. He was appointed by the council to the GPAC as recommended by the planning commission, so he's got a whole bunch more work in front of him, which is, he gets to do it twice, right? He gets to do it with the GPAC and then with you again, so it's great that he was willing to do that. But, and the council did appoint him at the last meeting, so you're here to Joe.
We will have a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, yes, we, yeah, yes, we do. Okay. Oh, I got one more thing, sorry. And so recruitment for the vacant chair is probably going to, we have three applicants. The council is likely going to interview them, I think in November, the very beginning, so we should have a new person in November, or the end of October, depending on how that all works out. But that's what we're talking about right now. We have some full agendas and a lot of stuff on them, so trying to pick out times where that can take place, so.
And so the three of us will be a quorum, correct?
Yeah, you just have to have, you mean, yours will have to be unanimous.
Okay. Anything else, Scott?
No, that's it, that's all I have.
All right, at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building. at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Sur Street on October 17th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. And thank, thank you, everyone.